Hello.
Hey Linda.
Hello. Hi, I can't hear you. Are you in the meeting yet?
We're in the meeting. Can you hear? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. I couldn't hear anything before.
That's because no one was talking.
Oh my goodness. Alright, thank you. I'll go back to you.
I think everyone's just kind of multitasking while they're waiting for other people to join.
Yeah.
Of course.
That's dinner.
Let me just see if everybody can hear.
And I will say.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Whatever you want to call Paul.
Thank you.
Term for life partner.
Alright, I can't quite see you. Looks like we have a quorum maybe?
She loves irony.
Yeah, is everybody here? I think we're all here. I don't see.
Jackie, yes, you have a quorum. Everybody is present.
Yeah, let me just turn up the volume. We're getting used to new technology here and can everybody, I guess you can't hear us. I'm in the.
We hear you fine.
Okay, good. I'm in a small conference room with Leah and Jeff and Ernie. So I don't know how many of us you can see. We were trying to fiddle around with the screen here to make it work.
We can see, not Ernie, but we can see Jeff and Leah.
Ernie moves that way.
No, you're fine.
Nobody wants to see Ernie.
I'll switch with Ernie. That's fine.
Okay, anyway, so nice to see you all and I guess we're calling this a hybrid format. So let's see how well it works. And thanks for all coming tonight. I appreciate it. And I guess our first item of business here is to approve our agenda, to write your motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ernie. Do we have any discussion?
Only question I have is where did the density study draft RFQ come from?
That came from Ron, I believe. As far as I know, Ron, that came from you, correct? The density study?
Correct.
Yeah, right. Any other questions? Okay, alright. Why don't we have a vote? All in favor or do we need to? I guess we need to call because I can't really see everybody. Jeff Lebel?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And Ernie?
Hi.
Jeff Goodrich?
I abstain.
And Leah?
Hi.
And Jackie is an I. Great, okay, so six in favor and one abstention. I want to welcome Tony McBride. Thanks for coming. And before we hear from you, is there any public comment? I don't see if anyone else is on the screen. Rod, do you see anyone else that's here? I don't see anyone here.
Claudia Burcho, Burchu and Blindi Cook are both present, but neither of them are asking for public comment.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it. Alright, we can move then to the next item on our agenda, which is the Norwich Technologies Upper Loveland Road solar installation. I know this is an exercise that many, I think all of us might be familiar with by now. We've had different proposals over the years come to us on solar installations. And our role as a planning commission is to review the request and make sure it conforms to our direction in the town plan, which is basically to make sure that the installation isn't impinging on any ridgeline seen views, okay? And Troy will provide a lot more background on that. The action we're looking forward here tonight, we'll have a vote on a motion that this proposed project conforms to the preferred site standard as described in our 2020 town plan. So that's the action point. And you have the background materials in the packet that we provided last Thursday. And Ernie, you have a question before we turn to Troy?
Yes, I'm just curious, why is this in front of the planning commission instead of the DRB?
It's always come to the planning commission. It has always come to the planning commission. And I think, once again, it's our role to decide if it's impinging on the ridgeline. I don't have any better explanation than that. And then it'll also go to the select board as well. Rod, do you have any other clarification?
So, so the process that's laid out by the Public Utility Commission requires the signature of the Chair of the Planning Commission and the Chair of the Select Board. And the Public Utility Commission doesn't actually recognize local land use regulations such as zoning. So there is no mechanism for them to accept or review a decision made by the DRB. So, to be blunt about it, solar panel installations such as this that are going to be grid tied for net metering purposes are outside the purview of the Development Review Board.
Okay, thanks. Leah, you had a question. But can everybody hear us okay in here? I'm assuming then because no one's complaining.
We hear you fine.
Good, excellent. So with what you and Rod are mentioning, is that referring to page 21 in the packet, the letter that needs signature? Yes. Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. Okay.
So.
Jeff Goodrich, go ahead.
Yes, as much as I want to support this personally, I know the site really well and I don't see evidence that there's been a wetland scientist up here. And so until a wetland scientist does look at the site, I can't support this project.
Okay, so I don't know if Troy can hear that, but we have a question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell what Jeff Goodrich just said. He meant, I caught the word scientist, but I didn't hear the word before scientist.
Wetlands, wetland scientists.
May I repeat myself?
Sure.
This site exceedingly well. I don't see any evidence of a certified wetland scientist doing an analysis of this site. And so until that's done, I'm going to oppose it.
Okay.
Even though I support what Troy's trying to.
Yeah, and I can, I can talk to that as well, Jeff.
Yeah, Troy, do you want to provide any background? I mean, we can all read the packet. We've, I'm assuming we've all read the packet. And Jeff Goodrich has raised one question, maybe before you start. Does anyone else on the planning commission have a question that, so Jeff could target his remarks? I mean, Troy could target his remarks. Okay, take it away Troy.
Great, and yeah, and Jeff, I will, I will address that as we go forward here. And that's a very good question, so. But yeah, thank you for the opportunity to present potential solar project here in Norwich. I'm Troy McBride, one of the owners of Norwich Technologies. We're about a 10-year-old company. Also on the phone here is Orion Darlow, or on the Zoom is Ryan Darlow. He's a development engineer with a many years' experience in permitting and designing solar projects. So he can answer some specific questions if you have them. I think I can answer most of them. So Norwich Technologies, just for the background, I may have told you this before, we're headquartered in Watford Junction. We're about 35 people and, you know, we are focused on community solar projects in Vermont, New Hampshire and Maine. And we provide sort of end-to-end services. We have sales, financing, engineers, design permitting, project management and operations and maintenance. This particular project is a proposed, is about a six-acre project on a 30-acre parcel up behind Upper Loveland, up near the transmission line and the cell tower. It would be about three acres of solar panels, two to three acres of solar panels. One of the first steps, as we talked about, is coming before the planning commission and the select board to present the project. This is, again, the first step in the project and it's sort of a gating step going forward on the project is whether it is deemed as a preferred site or not determines whether we can do a project of this size in Vermont under the net metering programs, the community solar net metering programs. There is, beyond that, there's a full Act 248 process, which would be a 45-day notice, which we'll be sending out shortly. That has much of the information that we're providing to you now for the Act 248 process that is provided in the 45-day notice. All the adjoining landowners and planning commissions, select board, the state agencies are all stakeholders in that, so they all receive that. They all provide comments on that. And then we take those comments into effect and then after 45 days, we put in a full application. That's around a 200-page application that has expert testimony from a number of areas, including environmental, aesthetics, civil and historical and other areas. So that's, that's the background. I, I will pull up, just present this, the slides that I, that Rod shared, just so we can have some things to look at when we talk about it. Specifically to the wetland scientists, we are having a lot of wetland scientists look at the site. There are, you know, some areas there that we'll need to avoid and that is something we're fully committed to do and required to do is that is avoid all unmapped wetlands that are environmental. Scientists will locate and then we'll have full at least 50-foot buffer on any class two wetlands. And so that, the layout of our solar array might change slightly depending on, on the review of the wetland scientists, but it's a very, it'll be very minor changes based on, on the location. And there's, you know, areas that we already are avoiding based on our understanding of this site. So that's, that is, you know, coming and that is part of the, of the process. The entire permitting process is about, is about a year long and can be quite intensive. So let me just pull these, these documents up. You, you have them all except for the first one I'm going to show is just a very high-level picture to show you, to help you locate where this is. I hope you're seeing this. Is that, is that visible?
Yep.
Okay, great. So just as, as reference here, this is, Upper Loveland is Parallels 91, about a mile north of the exit. There's a cell tower that is, and I don't know if you can see my pointer.
Yes, we can.
There's a cell tower right here. We would access the site by the existing cell tower road, which actually comes along right here. And then we would come back into the site this way. Cell tower is here. This is a transmission line that goes through here. And then there's a, a little bit of a flat area in here and as Jeff is indicating, there's some wet areas right in, in this area that we'd be avoiding. And so the solar panels would be in this general area here using the west existing clearing from the transmission lines as the, as a boundary on this side. And then this is Hawk Pine neighborhood over here, some town land here. And so that's the general, and four-wheel drive road comes up here. So that's the general location and proposed installation. This whole parcel is 38 acres. There's about five acres that are staying with the cell tower. And so the remaining 33 acres would come under our ownership. We would install the solar array in this area and leave the remaining property open for public use. There's some trails on the Norwich town land here and it's, in general, a good location to maintain, open to the public. So the area falls within the ridgeline protection overlay showing here in yellow. And so the ridgeline protection overlay, Rod can tell you more about, but it's to protect the views and the natural beauty of Norwich. And so our design of the solar array is done in such a way that the array would not be visible from any public roads or, or houses. So it maintains the, the ridgeline protection view shed. This array shows, this, this is, was put together by Rod and added to the packet and just shows where we're talking about is an area that's actually a low-slope area. So the, the land slopes steeply up behind Upper Loveland. And then just before the transmission lines. And then there's this, there's a area of lower slope where we're looking to locate the solar array. There's no mapped state wetlands. There's a large wetland here in the, on the town property. However, there are some smaller areas in, on this parcel that our wetland scientists will identify and then we'll have a 50-foot buffer around any, any areas that we locate. This other information in your packet, but skipping over to the, the images. This is just a, some visual work that Ryan Darlow was on the phone put together. Though I took the photos, but he did all the analysis. So this is just showing how the array is, is very well screened. These points A, B, D and C, we chose as sort of the areas that to, to show visual analysis from as the most likely that you'd be able to see something. But in general, all of the neighboring houses and roads have approximately 500 feet or more of screening and a large 200-foot elevation change from the interstate and Upper Loveland to, to the proposed area. And there is the, the cell tower right here accessing through the existing cell tower road. This, so just, again, those pictures, A, this is a photograph from A. So you have the existing trees and slope here and then we're talking about behind that line is where we would locate the, the solar panels. This is another view further up the interstate. And again, it's located behind those trees near the transmission line corridor. This is just another view, again, behind this ridgeline is where we would be locating the solar array. This is actually off of Upper Loveland Road and it turns and goes up and dead ends. And then it has a, a class four road where it picks up on the other side. There's an opening where the transmission lines goes through and then from that opening, the array is still not visible as in it's up and around behind these, these trees up there is where the, the location is. And then the cellphone access, the cell tower access road is right here, just, just off-screen. This is another analysis that Ryan put together as another way to look at it. He can, he takes into account the topography everywhere and then he puts points at, at the various corners of the array and then looks out to see where the view. So this, this assumes there's vegetation here where we control it, but no, no vegetation anywhere else. So it's a, you know, analysis showing that this is not visible from any of the public roads or nearby houses. And if you have questions on that, Ryan could provide more information. Another way of looking at that is just looking at elevation changes. And from the various locations, again, this is from the interstate location looking over. And so you have a, a large elevation change and you have existing vegetation that makes it completely screened. This is just another point from the interstate, again, showing how the solar array is screened by both vegetation and the landscape that the, the topography from Route 5 as well. There's large elevation changes as well as vegetation that, that screen the array. And this is, where is this from, Ryan? This is Loveland Road. Okay, yeah, Loveland Road, which before the interstate would, you know, connect it over with Upper Loveland. And then from Upper Loveland Road, looking back along the transmission line, that's where you have the least topography change, but you do have vegetation, including vegetation that's under our control that is completely screening the array.
Troy, this is Jackie. I have a question.
Yep.
Were you happy when you found this site?
I, I am, I am, I am happy with this site, yes. I, the things I like about it is that it's near existing disturbance, so cell tower and transmission line. And so that makes it a very good site. It's a site where if we buy the land, we can provide a benefit to not only the, the state and the community through solar, but through, you know, leaving the land open to the public. And it is also completely hidden from the public, which I personally am not, and I, I love the look of solar arrays and I love seeing them, but there is very strong opposition by a certain subset of people to visibility of solar projects. So that this project very much meets the invisibility or well-screened requirement, which I begrudgingly accept as a, as a, as something that a subset of people really feel very strongly about. I do believe, yeah, it should, there's places where solar arrays shouldn't be that, you know, that would be obnoxious, but, but being able to glimpse them or, or see them should, shouldn't be a requirement, but in this case, we, we achieve that. And so that, that is, you know, a positive.
Let me just go around the table. Anything else that people want to hear about? Ernie?
No, I'm actually, I have, is alright to say?
that is all right to say, but I think, yeah, I mean, I'm not super thrilled with opening, having in general pastures, fields, woods torn down or, you know, placing like that has nothing to do with appearances. I think I kind of agree with Troy in terms of the appearance of the things when they're in the right places, but I think they belong on the buildings that are surfacing brown fields and parking lots and places like that. I really don't think they belong in fields. That said, I do appreciate the fact that he's using something that's kind of close to a brown field. I mean, I've been to that site and I, I had to deal with, I, I had, I proved the, helped to prove the cell tower there and all that sort of stuff because those are disturbed sites already. I would hate to see them on, on fields that have been turned from, let's say pasture or something, but I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah. So I, I'm less than ambivalent about the ridgeline issue. I agree with Troy. Let's see more solar rays. So that's not an issue at all for me. This is a super tough site with a ton of ledge. It is along a power line. I've hiked and jogged this quarter a whole bunch of times. I remain concerned. I, I probably won't vote no, but I won't vote for this either because of wetland issues, the notion of national wetland inventory adoption by the Vermont Center for Geographic Information is absolutely meaningless, especially with the state's requirement. If you have the district ecologists come out and take a look at things with respect to wetlands. And to me, that could simply expand the scope of the project, but until I understand better what those implications are, I'm going to have to abstain.
Leo?
Um, is there any more detail? I, I appreciate the presentation and I appreciate the presentation and the documents. Is there any more detail on what the anticipated timelines are for next steps?
Do you hear that okay, Troy?
Yep. Yeah, I did. The questions was on, on timelines for next steps. So the 45 day notice will be coming out shortly and, and you should see that as a, as a group. You know, Rod and Herb should be able to pass that, those, the 45 day notice along. That won't really contain much information that you don't already have, but that is an opportunity to provide additional comments, but you can obviously give those comments now. At the end of the 45 day notice is that's when you'll see the big package. And this is all assuming that you, that the select board and the planning commission vote to provide the letter. If you vote not to provide the letter, then that, the, the project sort of ends. And so that's the, the other, other side. But if you vote to provide the letter, then in, in 45 day notice, by 45 days, give or take a few more, we would be providing the full 200 page application in that would also be provided to the planning commission select board. And that would have additional information and detail, including, you know, all of the, all of the inventories that, that Jeff is describing as well as others. And that as well, you provide comments, provide, you know, you can provide them directly to us, but you can also provide them through the public utility commission. You're a stakeholder in that. And then that, there's usually a number of back and forths in that process. And then within six months to a year, the project would receive a a certificate of public good, basically a permit. And that, so that would be sometime around this time next year. And so the actual project itself would take place sometime between, you know, this time next year and this time in 2020 three.
Okay. Thanks, Troy. Jeff Lubel, any comments or questions?
Uh, no, I saw Brian had, Brian's hand was up though.
Okay. I can't see him. So thank you for that. Brian, any comments or questions?
Yeah. Thanks Troy for the presentation and, and the documents. Just happened to be up there the other day, actually on the trail that Jeff Goodrich mentioned connecting the top of four wheel drive to those trails into Hawk Pine. But I, I wanted to hear a bit about your acquisition of the site, when it occurred, what the transaction was like and what your plans are and what other opportunities there may be on the rest of the parcel, which you said is another 33 acres.
Yeah. So it, it's another 27 acres, right? 33 total. And the solar will be at about, it'll be about a six acre project. A solar will be about three, so about 30, 30 acres, right? Yeah. So it's only under contract. So purchase and sale contract. And we're only purchasing if we're able to move forward with a the solar project so that that is part of sort of the negotiation. So we're under purchase and sale contract to purchase it. And we would purchase it at the time that we got a severe public good. So next year, around this time is when we would purchase it. But we would have an under contract during that time. The you know, full disclosure, I live up there and, you know, use trails in that area extensively. And so I, my plan for the remainder is to leave it open as, for trail use and, and used by the public for other, other means. So just similar to the town of Norwich land, which is right there.
Thanks. Sorry. I missed, who owns the land now?
The land is owned, what's his Josh Lewis, John, John Lewis? Rod, you
It's John Lewis.
John Lewis. It's owned by John Lewis. They actually, his family owned much of the land on both sides of the interstate there. And
And it's the timeline, the history of you guys locating the parcel and getting under contract.
Okay. Yeah. It's for sale on, just for sale by owner, by a real estate broker. And it was for sale for about about a year. Nobody, nobody purchased it. The price came down and we put an offer on.
Great. Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Brian. Anything else we need to know before there's a, we ask for, have a motion? Okay. So the motion we're looking for here is to recommend to the select board, a letter of support be provided Norwich Technologies for their proposed solar generation project on Upper Loveland Road. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Jackie, can I ask a couple more questions or do we need to?
I, I just, I just asked if anybody needed any more information. So I didn't hear an answer, but go ahead.
I guess, Jeff, Jeff Goodrich, how do you, how would you feel about supporting a motion that's conditional and seeking, on them seeking that additional scientific guidance? And then, and then also another question to Troy is if they looked at any kind of development opportunities on the rest of the land? And if, you know, I love trails also, that's, that's why I was out there myself. But if you, if you would be open to exploring any, any development on that parcel.
Yeah. So you asked one of me and one of Jeff. So I'm happy to, why, Jeff, do you want to, or?
Actually, actually, Jackie, can I cut across this for a moment? So I want to be really clear that my memo made really clear that the scope of the planning commission's review is to do with whether you can reach a conclusion that there is, that the visual impact has been minimized.
Right.
From the vantage points of public, state, state highways, the interstate and town highways. And so with regard to the question of wetlands, Troy has patiently explained that there's another step in the process for him. And that's to do with wetlands, but that's not, that's not germane to the planning commission's inquiry here. And so that the memo makes that clear. And, and that also goes to the question of what if any other uses would be proposed for the site, while that may be of interest to individual planning commission members, it's not germane to the review that you're undertaking here. So with regard to the memo and the suggested motion, the motion reflects the scope of the planning commission's review. And so to be clear, it's visual impact analysis that you're doing. And that was the, that was the majority of Troy's presentation to do, addressing the potential for visual impact.
So do we have some other guests? Go ahead, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah. So first I appreciate Rod as planning and zoning director indicating what he just said, trying to focus us. And I would certainly agree with what Rod said with respect to Brian's query. Although I think it's a valid follow-up or discussion in this collegial setting. My issue, although I'm not deeply concerned about ridgeline or visual impacts, my issue is it's entirely possible that once the wetland issues are evaluated, this is going to expand and it could affect visual impacts, which wouldn't affect my positive support for the project even so. But there's not enough information for me to address the actual topic on the table.
Well, in your response to that, sorry Troy, I'll give you a shot. If, if the characterization of the, of the site for this, of disturbance would change dramatically as a consequence of the wetland mapping, then the obligation would be on the applicant to come back before the planning commission and see, and, and indicate that there's been a significant revision to the area of impact and then obtain permission, you know, obtain a lot of support from the planning commission subsequent to the changes to the project. So the assumption here is that the characterization of the project area is continuing. You know, is moving forward. If that changes, then also, so also does the letter of support.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Jeff. So I, I actually have a question. So how would, like, what's the process there? So if, you know, what, what is the point of intervention? Who, who decides, for example, if the changes that get made in response to a wetlands scientist assessment rise to the level of having to come back to the planning commission and seek a new, a new letter?
Yeah, that's a good question, Jeff. And I, I guess I'll give two answers to that. One is like, if you wanted to add a little language to the preferred citing letter, like we've had other planning commissions do things like that where they just add a, a sentence or, or something based on a specific request. So that, that's an option. The other is as a stakeholder in the when, when the full application comes along, you could say, as a group, you could evaluate it and say, I, this does not meet what we said was a preferred site, like they have changed the, yeah, they've changed the the layout extensively based on something that they did not present to us. So and that the PUC would take that extremely seriously if you were to, and obviously I would, because our reputation is, is extremely important to us. Plus we want to do the right thing. But if, you know, if you saw that during that full application, that you thought that we had changed the, you know, changed, changed the layout in a, in a manner that changed the outcome or would, it was misrepresented of what was presented here, then then that would be another opportunity to, to present that.
So this is Jackie. I'd like to take a stab at this. Okay. A motion that would read, the planning commission recommends the select board, a letter of support be provided to Norwich Technologies for the proposed solar generation project on Upper Loveland Road, subject to a wetlands review that doesn't require movement of the project. Is that?
No, you can't do that because it's outside the scope of your review.
Okay.
Okay. So I think Troy's, Troy's tried to be helpful and say, at the point where the select board drafts the letter, the letter could identify that some members of the commission and the select board had concerns with regard to the extent of what, what unmapped wetlands and how, and what impact that may have on the final project. And then as Troy pointed out, and with the 45 day notice, there'll be another opportunity to review the project. And then the point where it goes before the public utility commission, which will be after the wetland scientist has characterized the site. If the proposed area of impact is dramatically different from what that will be, what we've been provided with for review here, then I would flag that and draw that to your attention. And I would draw it to Troy's attention. And then the letter of, the letter of support could either be withdrawn or modified to, to, to reflect the planning commission and the select board's concern with the changed nature of the project.
Okay. So I misunderstood. Then the, this caveat, if you will, would appear in a cover letter, not in the motion.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I misunderstood. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, if I may address it. So like Troy said, I've seen caveats like this in motions in other places. So I think we can do that.
He didn't say in, in motions. He said in a letter.
In the letter.
Jackie was making a motion, I thought. So if I may finish my statement before being interrupted. So sitting here, I'm not advocating that we address the wetland question in a motion. Even though I abstained and others may vote for this, that's fine. But I just want to state for the record that it's possible to include wetland considerations because they very well, may, very well may affect the things that we're considering.
Okay. All right. I'm going to, any other comment? Go ahead, Bernie?
Yeah, just have a question. I'm not clear on what happens if, after the wetland scientist comes, let's pretend, just for sake of discussion, because I have no idea if this is going to happen or not. If the, if they determine that the site as it's been presented to us today is not suitable, it has to be changed or something like that. What happens then? If we, you know, since we're voting today, what happens? What, what, what's the consequences for our vote?
I think I've already tried to explain this a couple of different ways. So if the site, if the, if, if the area of impact for the proposed project changes dramatically as a consequence of the wetland scientist's input, then the applicant's obligated to come back to the planning commission and notify them of those changes. If they don't, or if there's a, if there's, if, if it's, if they overlook that, then we have the ability at the 45 day notice point to review the materials that they submit. And then we subsequently have the, the ability to review the materials that they submit to the public utility commission first for certificate of public good. So we have two, setting aside the goodwill of the applicant, we have two regulatory moments where we can voice our concern that what's being reviewed by the public utility commission is not what we reviewed. And as Troy pointed out, that would be taken, you know, very seriously.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I just, Jeff, is it, would it be appropriate for us to, you know, just to ask Troy to let us know what happens when you get the, you know, the opinion of the wetland scientist about whether you need to move the site? Whether, you know, whether that affects the, the view considerations that we're, we're, you know, it seems like a common courtesy, you know, rather than just having to sort of make an assumption about whether or not it, it's, it's, you know, a big deal or not. If you just, you know, let us know that would at least trigger for us the opportunity to kind of take another look at it. If it turns out you needed to move it in a significant way.
So I'm very happy to come back and, and present and we'll send you the data through, we can send the data directly to Rod when we have it. data through, we can send the data directly to Rod when we have it. I do want to note that you will not see it in the 45 day notice. That that'll be coming out tomorrow based on some, you know, the the timing of various PUC deadlines, but you will see it in the full application and we will have it before we submit the full application and can send it to you before we submit the full application by sending it to Rod.
Thank you.
And happy to come as well before the planning commission, if you have the have the bandwidth.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy. Any other comments or questions before a motion? So the motion that we're looking for here is the planning commission recommends the select board a letter of support be provided to Norwich Technologies for their proposed solar generation project on Upper Loveland Road. All we're voting over a responsibility here, as has been described, is that there is no ridge line impact on this project. We have such a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Melissa. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ernie. Okay, I'll go around and we'll do a roll call. Melissa?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi, for me as well.
Jeff Lebel?
Hi.
Leah? Jeffrey Goodrich?
I abstained.
Jackie is an I. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I thought you already answered. Apology. Go ahead, Ernie.
I.
Ernie's an I. Okay, thank you, Ernie. Okay, so thank you, Troy. Appreciate your time tonight and we can move on to our next item on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So announcements, reports, updates and correspondence. We've had no correspondence that I know of. Rob highlighted two items in his report. Jeff sorry, Brian, thank you for the childcare report. I know there's been a minute, a meeting since those minutes were published. I think it was last night you had your another meeting. Is there anything you want to add that we didn't hear about in the minutes before?
Just that we're moving forward with the interim report to the select board and have much of it drafted and we're working to refine it and get it to them earlier this month.
And it looks like to be a very comprehensive report. I'm looking forward to that. Yeah, it's good work that you guys are doing. And then, of course, Jeff Lebel provided the affordable housing committee minutes. Any topics for discussion here? Anybody wants to ask about?
Jackie, was this where you wanted me to raise the issue about Thetford?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, yes. If you could give us an update now, that would be really helpful.
Sure. Yeah, so I contacted David Forbes, who's the chair of the Thetford Planning Commission, and he said that he would welcome the opportunity to exchange perspectives and ideas with the Norwich Planning Commission. His recommendation, though, is that rather than trying to get all like the whole planning commission together, that that, you know, he be the representative, you know, and that we, you know, could just have him. And I wasn't sure, it seemed like a reasonable point, you know, everyone's really busy. So we could either have a small delegation that meets with him or we could invite him to one of our meetings. I don't know what what you all think, but I I feel like, you know, his offer was a reasonable one. It would mean that, you know, we could just call like a time when people want to come and you know, whoever comes shows or we could be more formal than that. So just let me know. Be interested to hear what other people think.
Yeah, that sounds really positive, Jeff. I I like the idea of representatives, keeping it small. That makes sense to me. Why don't I go around the table since it's hard to really see who's raising their hand or not? Leah, any comment?
And my understanding from, thank you, Jeff, for doing that. My understanding for this initial outreach was to basically just see if people were open to talking, but the future discussions are not meant to have motions or actions, just discussion. Correct?
Yes.
Yep. So I'm 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 waiting to see what everyone else says. I'm open to either having a small group start the conversation, make a recommendation for joining a meeting or joining our meeting. I'm just mindful of the agenda.
Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, Jeff, having worked with the town of Thetford about affordable housing, I wonder if there's a possibility that he or the PC might first engage the affordable housing subcommittee. And then as a result of whatever occurs there, come back to the planning commission.
Ernie?
I I just prefer to actually hear indirectly from their representatives myself rather than have it secondhand.
Okay. Brian?
I don't have any comment. Just thanks, Jeff, for doing that outreach.
Okay, Melissa?
Um, I guess from our previous conversation, I think last month, it was my understanding that we might talk about issues beyond the affordable housing, just general planning commissions. So I would think it may be better to have a discussion if if he's willing to come to the planning commission meeting as opposed to just the affordable housing subcommittee group.
One, this is Jackie. One thing I would say is we need to follow open meeting law on this thing. And so the easiest way to do that is to have him come to a meeting because we're already posted, we already have minutes and so on and so forth. Or if we're going to have a smaller group, then you just have to go through that process. That's all. You just need to be mindful of that.
If we have a quorum?
What do you mean that we have a quorum? Oh.
If 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 three of us were meeting with David or two of us were meeting with David, it wouldn't be a quorum, right? And we wouldn't need to warn it. Is that right?
That's right.
A quorum of what? Oh, I see what you mean. Of any committee. Okay.
He's not. Yeah, I mean, I think he's interested in talking with somebody. And the question is, is it who the who that somebody is? And I it's, I'm happy to have him come to a meeting if you if you all want to allocate, I don't know, like half an hour of a of a meeting, you know, he could talk for 10, 15 minutes. We could talk for 10, 15 minutes, but what we're up to and we could figure out if there's any, you know, follow up we want to do. But I'm, you know, people are busy and we've got a lot on our agenda and I'm also happy to just you know, maybe there's two or three of us that want to get together with them and just kind of have a conversation.
Yeah. Go ahead, Leah.
So following up on that topic, then does that meaning we need to maybe as a group gather questions or do we want to allocate somebody to, I'm not trying to point fingers at Jeff Lebel, but of like key topics so that we have a concerted effort for the discussion? We need to gather topics or do we feel that we're prepared if we invited them, let's say, even for next month, that we know what we're going to talk about?
Was that a question for me or is that just a statement you're reading?
Well, it's, I would like some discussion. I just to see, um, yeah, that was my, it was a question.
Well, what one suggestion maybe might be to go around the room and see who would want to participate in this conversation. And if if it's all or most of us, maybe we could just schedule a time to invite them to our next to an upcoming meeting. And if it's only two of us, then 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 we can have an offline conversation and maybe everybody could just send us, you know, topics that are on their mind that they want to share and that we will have collected the information that Leah's talking about.
Okay. All right, let's just find out who would be in, would you prefer to, who would be interested in participating? Let's answer that question. Ernie would like to participate. Jeff Goodrich, would you like to participate?
I'll defer to the group. I'd like to see him engage the affordable housing subcommittee beyond that. I'll defer to the group. And I don't need to be there.
Yeah, I I would like to be there, but I'm not going to stop the group if I can't be there.
Okay, Brian? You would like to be there? Melissa?
Well, I just, as this was proposed as an idea that we might do with other towns as well, I would definitely like to be part of the conversation to see, you know, just what what this involves and what we get back from it to see if this is something that would be productive to keep doing with other towns. Obviously, you know, we all work. So I do have time constraints, but that's why I think if he could come to a meeting, that would be great.
Okay. So I'm hearing that there is support for having David come and spend a little time with us. That's what I just heard. Okay, so to Leah's point, do Jeff, do you have topics in mind? Could you put together an outline of what of what my that half hour might look like?
So I I can certainly put together some thoughts of things that we would talk about, but what's the best way to?
And Jeff, if people and if anybody has an idea or question, you would send it to Jeff. Go ahead.
Well, Jeff Goodrich? If I may, yeah. So I was going to suggest whatever Thetford's town plan priorities are, I would ask him, what are your priorities? And then for me personally, in my bias, ask for thoughts about housing.
So what are the town plan priorities, thoughts on housing? Leah, what do you want to hear about?
Oh, put me on the spot. I remember the Jeff Lebel had a great list last meeting or the meeting before. So key hot topics, town plan, affordable housing.
So Jeff's list from the meeting before. That's good. Ernie, what do you want to hear about?
Same basic, same basic information. I'm I'm not going to be very specific demanding anything. I just want to hear what's going on.
Okay. Melissa, anything specific you want to hear about?
No, I thought, I mean, I thought we had talked about last time. Yeah, just general, like what what are their focuses and, you know, what we're working on and just a general dialogue.
All right. Jeff Lebel, is this enough guidance for you?
I think so. I think the main thing I would suggest is it should be a two way street. You know, I would recommend that we we set aside up to a half an hour total for this and get, you know, give them a chance to kind of provide a report on what they're up to. They've been really busy. They've got a new town plan and you know, there's been obviously the affordable housing thing that Jeff mentioned was a big deal and you know, and then we should be prepared to share, I think, kind of the things that we're working on. You know, we have a new town plan. We have this wastewater study. We have the zoning study. You know, I I think, you know, part of this should be just an opportunity to catch up and part of it should be, you know, opportunity to surface whether there's any follow up conversations that we want to have that might be productive on issues that are shared issues.
Yep, good. And I just want to reinforce what Jeff Goodrich mentioned in terms of housing, you know, they they had a false start on an affordable housing project just recently that I'm sure you're all aware of, was in the papers and and now there's a group that's trying to come up with some alternatives. So I think that maybe not during our half hour, but I don't know. We'll see how much we get to cover, but it may be a good follow up with the affordable housing group too. All right.
Brian, Brian has had his hands up. I'm not sure you can see, so.
I can't see. So thank you very much, Brian. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Jeff, and thanks, Jackie. You know, this might just be a question to ask beforehand. If it's not of interest, then no bother having it at the full discussion, but perhaps childcare is an issue. They have even fewer local resources than we do. Need see if it's on, if it's on their radar to uncover strategies to promote access.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else I missed? Okay.
So do we want to invite him to the next meeting?
I heard yes, and if for some reason Jeff Lebel, that's inconvenient for him, we have a meeting in September. Okay, so maybe give him the choice of the August meeting or the September meeting. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Anything, any other questions on the this item on the agenda, the announcements, reports, updates and correspondence? If not, we'll move to our density study RFQ. Rod, you want to take us away on that? There's information in your packet, a copy of the RFQ. Might want to turn to that.
So as explained at the last meeting, this is an RFQ that's been prepared to to solicit responses from qualified GIS technicians and it conforms to the requirements of the procurement policies of the town of Norwich and also the municipal plan grant program, which is the funding source for for the project. So it lays out a scope of work and goals and then lays out how that should be undertaken and then it gives details some that are quite explicit about the format for the files that would be generated by the technician that's doing the work. And most of that information comes from the state office for archiving and generating GIS information for the state, which basically goes, the reason why it's there is that when you, when a public entity like a town uses state funding to do GIS work, the contractors are required to provide any new GIS information in specific file formats to VCGI, which is the state office of GIS, so that if it's new material that they can archive it and make it available if other towns or other entities, including state officials are interested in it. So that's most of what's on page two. And then just how they should go about responding in terms of the format, the due date and evaluation criteria for any for any submissions. And then the the sort of expected preferential treatment for minority or women owned business enterprises as part of it. So if anybody's got any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them.
Brian, go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Rod, and thanks for preparing this. Because I had several questions, but before I get into them, just how routine is this kind of study? And a similar similar question we had on the wastewater one is like, yeah, basically, how much of the cake is baked? How much opportunity do we have to shape where this goes? Because that'll determine the the rest of my questions.
So the process here is that the planning commission is able to provide comment at this point on the draft document, but it's the document will be town of Norwich document. And so I'll be working with the town manager to ensure that it's consistent with town of Norwich policy and and then it will be released insofar as it the cake is baked. The description of the work, so the scope of work section and the goals are drawn directly from the municipal planning grant material that was submitted that we received this, we, you know, with that we received the funds for. And we can't easily deviate from that. So there was discussion at the time when we put the grant application together as to what the what the scope of the study would be and what the background was, the reason why we were wanting the study to be done. So in that sense, the framework for this RFQ was laid down when we put together the grant application. So there isn't a whole lot of room to change content here.
Hey, hey, thanks. Thanks. That's helpful. I may just make some observations and then to the extent that it's possible that they could perhaps that could be helpful if you, if there's, if there's no way, then then don't worry about it. To me, the the outcomes that were asked.
Sorry, you broke. Brian, you just broke up a little bit there. Could you just restate what you just said? I'm sorry.
Sure. Rod, were you able to hear me?
Yep, I heard you.
Okay, so what I what I was saying is take these questions and comments as as just my own observations and and Rod, if if they find their way into the RFQ, great. If if not, then I leave it to your judgment. And the the outputs that it says we're looking for strike me as that it says we're looking for strike me as pretty narrow. And and perhaps too narrow to be that helpful for policymaking. That the impact of the current formula is something that can be measured as an outcome of of many variables, one of which is is shown by the the building over those two time periods. Of course, there's many other factors that go into that market conditions, you know, exactly what parcels we're talking about, individual property owner decisions and and the for the formula, if that's if that's the extent we're looking at it, that doesn't tell you the the impact on its own. So I just what what I'm getting at is if if we learn through this study that the build out pre-formula was different than post-formula, that doesn't tell us either that there's a need to change the formula or how to change it. And so I want to be sure that we have something that's truly actionable from this as opposed to the description of two time periods in Norwich, which we knew were different anyway. Does that does that make sense? And and I'm not framing that in a way as edits to the RFQ. I leave that again to your judgment to the extent that you think it's relevant, but I I don't want this to just be a study that we get and forget about it.
Yeah, so your bias, Brian, which is a good one, is, you know, we want actionable data, data that we can somehow. That's what you're asking for.
Does that make sense, Rod, and?
In so far, I mean, it is a technical study and I, you know, it would be great if it produced actionable, directly actionable output. I think it will actually produce meaningful data that will help the planning commissioners deliberations when it comes time to reviewing the subdivision regulations. So we don't know very much about what the settlement patterns were prior to the amendment in back in 2002 and then I think there was a slight adjustment in 2006. We know, we know anecdotally that the planning commission at the time was concerned about breaking up of large forest blocks and the habitat that went with them, and they were also concerned about what appeared to be at the time a pattern of people buying property with frontage on class four roads and impacting the environment as a consequence of using those class four roads to access property. So basically, I a someone patent that was diffuse and and I think the biggest concern was to do with natural resource impacts. But the objective of the zoning change, the regulation changes to the subdivision regulations was to try and redirect development towards paved roads and closer to the village. That's the whole, the way the density factor works. How well the density factor has has worked will be reflected in has the settlement pattern in the last 20 years come close to or followed the the predicted pattern once the density calculate, the density factor calculator was was included in the subdivision regulations. And so the only way we can really do that is to is to go through the history of settlement. I think that the key that will will produce actionable results most likely is a form of build out analysis. So each parcel that's being subdivided, we will know from the density factor calculation, how many parcels could have been created there? And ultimately, how many parcels have been created there? And my my general hunch from looking at the patents that I see is that it's a huge difference between the potential number of parcels close to the village and close to the paved roads. The, you know, the the theoretical number and the actual number, there's a there's a massive difference. So for instance, in a 90 odd acre parcel, it could, it could be, could have been subdivided on from near the corner of New Boston Road and Beaver Meadow or Turnpike, I'm sorry, and it could have generated something like 20 parcels, and it's generated two. So that's the, that's the order of magnitude that I'm looking at. And so if that if that's the pattern all the way across town, you know, you you leave 18, you leave 18 parcels on the on the table, then my hunch is that a different pattern is emerging here. And so it used to be in Vermont that 10.1 acres or just over 10 acres was your default parcel size in rural residential zoning districts because that meant that you were exempt from wastewater regulations. To put a colloquially, you could shit in the woods. You didn't need it. You didn't need a wastewater permit. You didn't need to do anything. You could literally just go out your back door with a shovel. When they, when they changed that, which was as recent as 2007, people stopped shitting with a shovel in the woods and came inside. It was a big shift for Vermont. It was quite, was quite was quite novel for many people to crap inside. And so the new parcel size, minimum parcel size in rural residential districts dropped from 10.1 to a smaller number. That patents, that patents actually still apparent in Norwich. You can see a lot of 10.1 acre parcels in Norwich. The new number might be something associated with something completely different, which might be market conditions, and my hunch is that it's probably current use. So the new default parcel size is somewhere between 25 and 30 acres. And in that instance, then the density factor calculator isn't producing the results necessarily that the people who drafted it set out to have it achieve. We'll get that. We'll be able to get that from this mapping exercise. We'll be able to see that.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, so I I guess what you you may get is that that individual property owners didn't take full advantage of what the density factor allows, but then what? Like, do you do a an even cooler density factor? Do you drive, drive down Main Street with a bullhorn like Demo saying, build more like there's no there's no, what do you do? Like, do you find it? Does it turn out that the density factor, the whole change was a total waste of time? Like, not, you get no really, you get no help for what we do from there other than to know that these were different periods in in time, right? Like, I just
Well, no, I think we do get help. We get, we get help as to whether the forest fragmentation is continuing unabated or whether it's reduced. If it's reduced, then how much of that can be attributed to the density factor calculation is an important thing to arrive at. So that 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 could be positive. And then the other thing is, if we're not actually dramatically increasing the density closer to the village and along paved roads, then maybe it's time to contemplate other tools so that when you get to the subdivision regulations, it used to be prior to 2002, the minimum parcel size in rural residential was two acres. Now it's now it's a sliding scale. And so maybe more bracketing needs to happen. Maybe you need to say that there needs to be more than two zoning districts or three zoning districts in the entire town. So rural, rural residential is 98% of the land area. Maybe you need to break that out into different zoning districts.
So that's exactly what I'm getting at. What what I hoped would be an output of this would be some type of recommendation for that ratcheting. But what I'm hearing is that, no, it's going to provide background information and data that you personally and us as a group will use to inform that future decision making. And that's something that I hoped we would be able to draw on more expert opinions through this study, but it doesn't sound like that's the case. Am I understanding this right?
I think that this technical layers is the layer that needs to get done first and then and and then a discussion, you know, and it will inform the discussion that the planning commission as a group needs to have about the subdivision regulations as a whole and the density factor calculator specifically.
I think Ernie had a comment. Ernie, go ahead.
Yeah, to me, this sounds, looking at the document and listening to Rod, which is the, he's consistent. The consistency in what he's saying and what I can read. It sounds like this is really fundamental material that we need. It it's maybe not everything that we need, but it's it's fundamental for us to do to take any actions later. If if we, if if this wasn't being done, I can't actually see how we could take further actions that would be, you know, would be necessarily effective. I mean, we'd be, you know, sort of taking shots at the dot. And I I think this is a a good idea from what I can tell from what I'm hearing and reading. I don't see how you could, as a technician, which I used to be, you know, technologist, engineer, whatever you want to call it, this is, this is a completely logical way to go.
And this is Jackie. From my perspective too, a good segue here is our work plan 2021, which we asked for at the last meeting. Rod put together a draft that you can see here, and if you look at the density study on the top, we talk about, you know, these steps to the RFQ and getting that work done and bringing it to the planning commission. One thing I want to see added here is I'm going to call it education or training, you know, in terms of what, what are the options? And I'm sure Jeff will get you. I'm sorry. What are the options that we should be considering that we should know about what are how can we get ourselves up to speed so that we are better prepared to have the discussion on what to do with this data? So that's something that I think is important and what you're getting at too, Brian. Jeff Goodrich had a comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, before moving off the question of RFQ. So I haven't had a lot of time to review it. I I have a ton of comments, which I'm glad to put into writing and submit to various commission members. I have basically two different perspectives. One is one of process and then one is one of content. And from my standpoint, as one who does a ton of land use stuff, the the issue in Norwich is wastewater and permitting. That's what's driving densities from my interaction with a ton of clients. We talk about this at the Affordable Housing Subcommittee constantly. With respect to density factor, I have no objection to the notion of multiple zones. However, the density factor that we worked very hard to to think about, I want to continue to promote the notion of, you know, closer higher density, but we've had density bonuses and inclusion areas zoning that have not benefited. And again, it comes back to the question of permits and wastewater, which is a, which is a killer. I'm not going to comment on the build out analysis question, but 2007, just for the record, was when the state took over permitting for wastewater disposal systems throughout the state. That changed a lot. I'll leave it at that. I think in terms of content, as is the Two Rivers, one of two members of the public appointed to the Keys of the Valley effort over the last couple of years, I'd really like to advocate interfacing with the Keys to the Valley group. So Two Rivers, I was going to say Southern Windsor, but it's now Mount Scutney RPC, Upper Valley Lake, Sunupie RPC, Vital Communities. And then prior to that, there was a ton, there's been a ton of work on issues related to this. So my my general comment in that regard is there are public agencies and a lot of a lot of effort that's that's been funded by a great deal of of money to evaluate things that relate to this. So I'd like to see the RFQ contemplate work that's already been done. I'm going to stop on my general comments. In terms of process, you know, select board and town manager want to issue this RFQ, fine. My general process question would be to the extent there's an opportunity for the planning commission to be involved in the formation of the RFQ, which seems like we're having that opportunity now, and then participating in the selection process and the implement implementation process. I think that would be, that would be very helpful. And then finally, as someone in a 100% woman owned business, I I'd really like to see the town take seriously the the WBE, DVE considerations.
Okay. Other, other comments? Let me go around the table, make sure we don't miss anybody. Melissa? Well said. Jeff Lebel?
Yeah, I I guess my reaction was generally similar to Brian's in that it seemed like this was a useful exercise, but only took us part of the way. You know, it's like, you know, moves us 20 yards down the field, but doesn't get us to the goal line. And so I am interested to just better understand than like how we get all the way down, right? You know, so how do we, how do we go from the study that says either yes or no, there's been a change in the development pattern to sort of like a sense of like how we're going to rezone to achieve our goals?
So maybe Rod, could we go to the the work plan for a minute? And maybe just talk through some of the steps? How do we get from here to there?
I think the key thing, the key thing to be pointed out is that this is for $15,000. Right? And so the question, the question is, as an item, as a work, as a work product, what do you get for $15,000? And then the other part is a process question, which is to do with the role of the planning commission and the work of the planning, planning commission itself. Many people have mentioned lots of different sources of information and reflected on how far this gets you down the field or some other similar metaphor. I think it's, it's really important to understand how far the $15,000 is going to get you. And there was never any sense in the beginning that this was going to get you even halfway. So most of the work is in terms of policy is is going to have to actually be done by the planning commission. Now, clearly, that's going to take more information and it's going to potentially take more professional information being provided to the to the planning commission when they, when they have their discussion about the scope and the content of the new land use regulations. But as Ernie pointed out, you're not going to know what to do if you don't know what the current circumstances are, which is all this RFQ is looking to do. So with reference to the work plan, you'll see that this spreads out. Ideally, it should be concluded by December or in the end of the first quarter of 2022. The wastewater study will be underway by then, and it also should conclude by spring 2022. So at that point, you're going to have some solid technical information about the settlement patterns outside the village, because that's the focus of the this RFQ is for the rural residential district only, which is 98% of Norwich's land area. And you'll have the wastewater study, which focuses on the village and the areas immediately immediately adjacent to the village. And so there'll be insights to be drawn from there. Meanwhile, you will, as a group, have come to understand the contents of the administrative section of the zoning regulations and have been presented with a draft replacements administrative section of the land use regulations, which would be formatted in a completely different way and reflect current best practices in Vermont with regard to administrative process. And in that time, you will have developed enough information to actually or enough of an insight to to actually ask other questions and obtain other information. And that's when the, you know, so we're talking roughly this time next year, where there'd be, there'd be the commencement or at least the the formulation of a of an outreach process that would deal with the other section of the land use regulations and subdivision regulations. So that would be the zoning districts themselves and then and that would be minimum parcel size, the number of zoning districts, what the purpose of each zoning district was going to be. And then that would have built on the outcome of this RFQ that we're discussing tonight. So in terms of moving ahead, this and the wastewater study will feed into a more informed planning commission that will be able to discuss the policy heavy areas of the land use regulations. So that would be the zoning districts and then this subdivision process itself. Most of the subdivision regulations are administrative or they're technical with regard to the process. And there's some requirements to do with natural resource inventorying and and other measures. But so the real so the real heart of the land use regulations in many ways is the is the zoning districts, what what are allowed. so the real heart of the land use regulations in many ways is the, is the zoning districts, what, what are allowed uses? What are conditional uses? What the minimum parcel size is and so forth? And that's going to be where the planning commission has to take on a, a leadership role in terms of discussing with the broader public what the goals and visions were that were outlined in the town plan and how you propose to take the vision that was encapsulated in the 2020 town plan and turn it into new land use regulations.
Thanks, Rod. I know particularly this Jackie, I was particularly glad to see too, in September, we have the DRB input, which I think will be a really valuable exchange. We've talked about this for a while now and I think, you know, the timing is here. Hearing their experience with our current zoning and suggestions that I know they have had over the years, I assume Rod will be part of that exercise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay. Any other comments or questions about this workflow or things that Rod has said? Yeah?
Thanks, Rod, for this. Just clarifying points regarding the work plan. My understanding of task one with the density study. Just so I can compare the packet to this chart, sounds like the submission deadline is in August, that's why it's blank. And then most likely the work will begin, as you say, the award contract in September. And so the commencement report that whoever gets to do the work most likely is starting in October and the milestone report is something that we'll be reviewing.
The milestone report will be a, yeah, a point, a point of connection between the contractor and the planning commission.
And then I, I just, as point of discussion, I, I recall something that Jeff Goodrich had mentioned earlier about not to change your words or anything, but about seeing who submits and possibly being able to see who submits. That would happen in August. Is that something that we can see or is it just not something that we can be a part of?
The process will be that the town manager will appoint a, a small subcommittee or working, like, I'm, I'm reluctant to use any kind of common English term to describe a small group of people for fear, for fear of exciting, fear of open meeting law violations. But there will be some people and their names will be selected by the town manager with input from me. And those people will meet, I don't know how secretively or how publicly, but the process will be consistent with the procurement policies of the town of Norwich. And of course, will reflect our understanding, our current understanding of open meeting law. But so it's, it's commonplace that a small group of people gets to review and rank the the, the responses to an RFQ or an RFP. And the information that the applicants submit is generally held fairly tightly amongst that group of people until the process is concluded. And then all the information is in fact public.
Thank you. And then it looks like our December is very busy.
Yeah, just. It looks like December's busy. Yeah. Other comments or questions on the work plan? Do I see any hands? Am I missing any hands? Speak out now. One other body of work just to be aware of is this Trails and Paths master plan. That's a part of the planning commission responsibility and it's a 2023 deliverable. So we're getting at a running start, you know, this fall so that we can meet that deadline. But that's something to be aware of. And as you recall from our last meeting, Melissa is our point person with Craig Lane from the Conservation Commission to help bring that together. They've had, Melissa, you there? I know you're blacked out right now. Are you there? Yeah, there you go. You just want to talk briefly about your, the, the meeting that you had with Craig?
Yeah, we had a great meeting where Craig is reaching out to some of the other important players and the different committees that, sorry, I have a really bad headache, so I'm trying to, to work through it, but that would have important input and we're working to organize that and hopefully have a meeting at some point to, to get everyone together to discuss it. So it, it seems exciting.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope you feel better. Okay. So then, anything else? Anybody want to say about that? Okay. If not, why don't we move to, oh gosh, our planning commissioner code of conduct. We're here.
Jackie, Jackie, I have a question. Was, was there a need for a motion at all on this study or is it?
No, no, no need for a motion. No. It's a, no need. Our comment was what was our action for this particular. We're all here. We're all having fun. So it's time to do the code of conduct and Jeff Goodrich, thanks for ferreting out the select board envisioning document that we all have been talking around but couldn't find. Although I did just notice the today, tonight that it's still on the wall downstairs. So that's great. Oh, and it's right behind us here too. So we all have it in front of us. Brian, I know you kindly agreed to lead this discussion and we're back. So leave this in your good hands.
Question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Jeff Goodrich.
Yeah, so I'm not complaining, at least it's not my intent, but the agenda to me has reasonably shifted substantially. And I'm wondering if we can, so if we're going to take this up in 20 minutes or so, I don't think that's enough time. So I would suggest we defer this discussion to the next meeting if you're, just because of the time element required.
The chair, I don't, I don't want to do that because we pushed this off too many times in my view and I think it's okay. Brian, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I guess I defer to you on, on the agenda, but I'm, I'm fine to have a, a longer discussion personally about it. Last time I, I gave a couple framing questions around the, the select board and the VSAs and how we may use them to bolster our own bylaws or contemplate doing so. And so if we are going to defer longer conversation, I'd want to I'd, I'd want to do a bit here to prepare us for that so that at that fuller discussion, we can come to a resolution. So we don't keep deferring and deferring and deferring.
Yeah, I, I don't want to keep deferring this. I really don't. I think it's important to talk about and I'll just say, I, I, I think this thing is terrific that this like board came up with. And I'd love to see us adopt it. I mean, that, that's my view of the whole thing. But Brian, what, what else did you, how else did you want to lead this discussion?
Yeah, so Jeff, as someone who's really pushed for this on the agenda, I, I honestly don't want to short, change this. What I suggested last time is finding ways to use other sources to bolster our own rules, perhaps in ways that mirror existing practices or codify them. And perhaps in, in ways that establish new ones that we aspire to. And, and the, the practical examples I gave were definition of elected officers and processes for agenda setting for subsequent meetings. And so I, I'd like to get to a point where we can bolster our bylaws in that way. And, and a separate issue is, is this, what you could call, you know, best behavior kind of vision thing, which we could adapt wholly as well. Use the conversation. Yep, sorry.
You froze and you, and your audio is breaking up.
I promise I didn't freeze. Perhaps something with the internet connection froze.
Yeah, your, your, your connection to the rest of planet got all messed up.
That's what vacation's about, Rod. So I, I want to be, I, I too love this vision document, but I see it as, I don't see it as really like, I don't think there's anything we need to change or that would change in adopting it. I think what, what could be material to our day to day and meeting to meeting work is having clearer processes around a couple of issues in our bylaws. And so I'm, I'm happy to talk about, about both of those and have a, some discussion if folks are ready for that this evening, if it goes heads or direction and best of your kind of things. Yeah, I just don't know where the, where the group is because I, I'd like to wrap this up and have it, like I said, codified in, in our own practice.
Would there be any objection to, as a first step, adopting this vision and guiding principles that's been presented to us? Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, I, I, I really like this vision and have advocated for it for a while, but personally, I'd like to talk about broader issues before we take steps. So I'm not objecting to what you're proposing, but there's, there's a much bigger picture from my standpoint.
Jeff, since, since you weren't at the last meeting, are there other issues you would like us to focus the discussion on besides the two that I just mentioned that would be helpful in guiding our future meetings and between meetings?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, Jackie and Brian. And I, I just want to comment sitting here tonight, and I don't know if it's because I'm not on Zoom, which affects my head trauma and borderline personality. I think this has been a great meeting. It's been collegial. I think Jeff, he's done a great job. I think other commission members have as well. That said, I'm concerned about conflating a bunch of issues. And I think in the VSAs, you know, 4325 talks about the role of planning commission. I think it's critical to understand what the role of planning commission is. The planning commission is comprised currently of seven members. It's not a chair, but it's seven members. And I'm not saying that in a, in a derisive manner. It's not my intent. It's not a staff member. The staff member has no standing in the context of these VSAs. So what, what I want to make sure, let me say it differently. My, actually, before I get on to that, select board has presented how they conduct their business. So what the select board does by law, what the town manager does by law, what the planning commission does by law, they're all different. So these are all different entities that need to be contemplated in the context of how, how we proceed going forward. I think a key issue for me, Brian, and, and, and I just want to apologize, I'll ramble on and on and I know there's not a lot of time. So the notion of bylaw issues has never been an issue with this planning commission. I've been involved since 1992, more or less, might be 91, I can't recall. To me, there's something going on in the last, I'm going to say three years, but I want to look forward. I don't want to look back. What I'd like to say to steal from Ernie is to have a seven member deliberative commission that contemplates issues. That commission comprised, is comprised of planning commission members led by planning commission members, directed by planning commission members. It's, it's not led or directed by a chair. It's not led or directed by a staff member. So to, to my way of thinking, I'd like to get to a place where we can collectively make decisions, which I think we were doing tonight with, with Jackie's, Jackie's leadership. I'd like to cast the proper position for staff. I understand Rod's made statements that he works for her. I understand. We have responsibilities that have nothing to do with the select board or staff. Let me say it this way. If you look at the VSAs and the requirements of the planning commission, the select board's role with the planning commission is to A, appoint members or not. Subsequently, it's the select board's role to either accept or modify whatever we submit to the select board. So at this juncture, we have broader responsibilities without regard to the political paradigm of a changing select board. So I just want to make sure that we understand that, what, what our role is collectively and how we address that. Furthermore, I'd like to make a, a quick comment about, and I know COVID, it's not fair, but I want to make a comment about historically having something like a point of order where you know, members of the commission have been able to say, hey, there's an issue with this. Let's address it. Not be cut off, not be muted, not be blanked out, not be talked over, et cetera. So going forward, if someone has a concern like tonight, and I think, again, I'm going to say, I think Jackie did a nice job tonight, to the extent there's a current concern, let's raise it. I, I think another question I want to bring up, without regard to open meeting law, although I'd like to address open meeting law in a broader sense. Oh, it's easy enough to, to address the open meeting law issues. We have multiple committees in this community. And I look at how the meetings are published, excuse me, the meeting minutes are published. Who publishes them? It's too easy for my standpoint to, to address a comment that Brian made. If we have a subcommittee, so what? Let's do it. We have someone that publishes minutes. We, we notice it, we get it done. We can move forward. It doesn't have to be centrally controlled. I have a lot more to say. I yield the floor.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. So based on this input. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, I just want to invite Jeff. Thank you for your comments. They echo things that, that you've said before that I know you feel strongly about. Given that the, the first hour and a half of this meeting was conducted in a way that, that you like, are there, are there rules that you think need to be changed that we can set ourselves to encourage future meetings of this type? Or are you looking for just, you know, like a meeting of the minds here and a sense of shared purpose and, and moving forward other, under, under this vision? Is there is, is there something missing in the rules that we set for ourselves? I, I'd really like to hear that from you.
If I may, Jack. Brian, you know, to the extent of rules, I'd like to talk about a subcommittee to put the rules forward, but I, I see myself as, what I would say is a historic liberal and an acolyte of Martin Luther King, where personally, you know, who we are is based on our character. Everyone is worthy of love and respect. And to the extent folks around us are not supporting that, we have to stand up in our First Amendment context and call them out. So sitting here, I, I think for the most part, and I'm going to say a little window in 2004, 2003 maybe, this commission has been collegial from my standpoint without the need to codify treating one another with, with respect. So I, I guess a question to you, Brian, and I've had this conversation with others, including you. When there are comments from members of the public or select board members, you know, et cetera, we need to say, no, we're not going to denigrate anyone. We're going to be positive. Now, having said that, I understand, you know, passions, I understand, especially in the Zoom's paradigm where I often can't hear. So is there a need to codify treating one another with love and respect?
Are you asking Brian or?
I, I'm going to, I asked Brian, but I, I said that before the whole commission. It's, it's time to hold one another accountable. Let me restate, I'm sorry, Jackie, because I interrupted. I don't want to interrupt.
Okay.
I feel like I interrupted you, so I apologize.
It's okay. It's okay. All right. I, I, we've heard some good things tonight. I, I, I feel like there's, you know, no, no harm in, in having a document like the select board has here that reinforces the behavior that you're talking about, Jeff. Why don't we do this? Brian, maybe could I ask from what you've heard here tonight, it's going to have some more input, you have some more material. Maybe could you think about a topic, get this topic on our agenda next time and how you want to organize it to try to get this job done?
Yeah, I, I think it, it, even though Jeff, you didn't, you didn't enunciate them, I, I think some, some process improvements could, could be helpful just so we all have a, you know, calm, common set of expectations around some certain things. And so before the next meeting, I'm happy to, to do a couple red line edits on our bylaws in these areas I've, I've identified and, and hopefully have a, a brief discussion. and, and hopefully have a, a brief discussion and potentially a motion around amending the bylaws in that way. I'm not hearing people jumping up and screaming saying, this needs to happen. But I, I think it, it could, it could be helpful, like I said, in, in setting people's expectations going forward because it may not always be, may not always be this, this group of seven people, right? And having things written down could be, could be valuable going forward. So if folks are cool with me doing that and bringing it for an agenda item for the next time, hoping it will be brief because I haven't heard a lot, like I said, I haven't heard a lot of other folks jumping up and saying, please include this, please include this, or address this in writing. So I hope that's okay with everybody.
Leah and Ernie have something to say? Go ahead, Leah.
I appreciate the topic and the initial discussion. I'm, I, while I agree that setting some sort of line from which we can check something off the list because there is work to do, and I appreciate that we're going to continue this in the next meeting. I do feel that how we work together is something that I don't think we should punt or take off the calendar. If it's something we need to address, then let's address it. I do also think that there's, we're, we're kind of talking about it, but just highlighting that there can be a difference between editing policy and practice and just clarifying among the group what, you know, just repromising to each other if we need to. I know other committees I've been on, anytime there's a new election, we just remind each other what we're committed to so that moving forward. My concern is this, when passions get high, when disagreements get high, when there's an opportunity for a potential misstep, that's not the time to say, oh, wait a minute, what was the rule that we didn't think of? It's actually now in the setting where we're collegial and common. And, and so I look forward to the continued conversation just, and, you know, I've talked with some people privately about, you know, the difference between guidelines, bylaws and policies. And I look forward to continuing the discussion because there's a lot of work to do. And personally, I, in the last couple of years that I've been on the commission, finding the appropriate mechanism to call people out is what I think causes a lot of heat. I'm not saying that that's something we need to have a heated discussion about, but perhaps just review what is in place and see if any edited edits are needed to help not only this guideline, but this committee, but what Brian had suggested of setting something forth so that it's general enough so that others in the future could interpret it their way. I'm just mindful of, let's look at what the self-discipline or self-monitoring is before it gets heated.
Thank you. Ernie?
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't want to repeat anything that Jeff or Leah just said, that, because most of it I agree with, vast majority would agree with. But I just was thinking that maybe it would be good while we've got another month, I guess, that maybe we can make comments, you know, in writing and send them to Brian.
Yeah, I'm sure he would.
Or whoever, it doesn't have to be Brian. He's, he's on vacation, isn't he?
Not, not forever. Brian, Brian, it's not forever. Brian, you would welcome the input, right?
But, but, but writing that stuff down. And, 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 you know, that's, that's, it's when, when you're kind of calm and, and you're thinking a little bit more about what you're writing around and responding.
Okay. Great. So just to close this out, I don't see any other hands. If anybody does have, have anything they want Brian to know as he goes, as he prepares an exercise for us at the next meeting, or he prepares this topic, please feel free to write Brian a note. Okay?
Jackie?
Yep.
I have one question. So we did provide some input to you, Brian, right before?
Yeah, I've, I've gotten some, some feedback from a few of you guys on some important themes, certainly. But if you have specific suggestions on bylaws or this vision that you'd like to share as well, happy to, happy to get that too.
Cool.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks.
Thanks for clarifying. Okay. Jeff, I can't see you, but you're all set. Jeff Lebel? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the minutes for June 8th.
So, so if I may, Jackie, I, I need to run. I just want to commend you and the rest of the commission for what I perceive as a good meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Do I hear a motion to approve the June 8th minutes?
Hey, I, I have, I'm sorry if you already did this, but there was, I didn't really understand the open meeting law thing. There's like a sentence missing.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about the, the minutes?
Just ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I'm sorry. You're on, yeah, okay. That's a good question. Let's look at that question, Jeff. I'm just trying to make sure I have the topic right. The open meeting law kind of, it is, can't we just?
Yeah, I think you, I think Jeff Lebel's right. There's something.
Somebody's opinion got taken out.
Yeah, somebody's opinion got excluded. So I'll.
Is that a reference to the legal?
Find out what that was.
Is that a reference to the legal opinion that was offered?
Yes, I believe it's the legal opinion.
Yeah, so we had that letter, remember, the last meeting?
Yeah.
From.
Yes, it was. It was from Joe, it was from Joe McLean.
Yeah, so we should just be more specific about that.
You could.
Good idea.
Maybe if you could just, you know, have a sentence that says that, you know, there was this opinion and here's what it said. And, and then that would provide some context, right, for understanding then what Leah is agreeing to.
Oh, you mean point eight?
Yeah.
That was going to be my comment. Yeah, that it was just a conclusion from whom?
Okay. Rod, you have enough on that?
Yep. So who, who's moved and who seconded the minute?
You moved yet? We just, Jeff Lebel wanted to get his question in, which was good. If we have any other questions, we'll take them in a minute. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
This is raising your hand. Do we have a second? Brian's raising his hand. Thank you. And then any discussion? We have that one suggestion on the open meeting law, just to clarify that it was Joe's opinion and what it said. Any other corrections? I don't see any hands. Okay. All in favor, I'll do a roll call. Brian?
Aye for me. Thanks, Jackie.
Yep, Melissa?
Aye.
Jeff Lebel?
Aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Leah?
Aye.
Jackie is an aye, and Jeff Goodrich had to leave in case you all didn't hear that. Okay. Okay, now other business. Do we have any other business? It's very quiet, so I'm assuming we don't.
Jackie, just one other.
Yep, go ahead.
The Dartmouth College Strategic Master Plan has come out. Maybe folks saw this.
Yes.
On daybreak, just encourage folks to take a look at it. They note that Lewiston is a super site or fantasy site or wonder site or something of that sort. I don't go into detail about hopes and dreams, but I'm just, would recommend that folks take a look at that plan. You know, it, it looks like it's, it's a vision more than a plan, but in either case, helpful to know what they're thinking.
Yeah, Jeff Lebel and I have talked a little bit, or been back and forth a little bit about this. Jeff Lebel, you want to comment on that at all?
Jackie, I would just say that the, in the context of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, that group deputized me to restart conversations around Dartmouth's plans that were from two years ago about housing. And so as, as Rod knows, I've reached out to Grant, who was one of the leaders of the plan and coincidentally also on the Select Board. But separate from that, to, to restart conversations about their interest in, in housing, if it goes beyond student housing and, and goes to the, to the land that they control.
Okay, cool. All right. Thanks for bringing that up, Brian. That's helpful. Future meeting schedule, we are meeting again on August 10th. Okay. Same time, same station. It'll be the same arrangements as we, I think this, these arrangements, I mean, they will get better at it each time, but it kind of works. Ernie, you have a question?
Yeah, well, about the next gen.
Yeah, 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 sure. But, you know, in terms of these physical arrangements, Rod, was it okay for you?
Yep, this is good. Thank you.
That's okay. All right. And so this, people have the option of being online and that's fine.
My only comment is I'm not 100% sure about public.
Public is invited.
In place.
Yes, it's a little small.
Yeah.
So that's why, you know, take that in, when you, if you decide to come here, realize the public may be here too. So that's how it works. But there is a rule for town hall that if you're not vaccinated, you're supposed to wear a mask. So that's the rule that they have.
Jackie? I managed, at least for the short term, to reserve both the multipurpose room and the small conference room.
Okay.
It was a bit of a surprise to see four people in that room, in that space. But if you were to prefer as a group to anchor the meeting and Tracy Hall from the multipurpose room, we could select that. I.
I think it's a better idea. Yeah, yeah, because it's, I agree. I thought, yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the expectation was that it would be you as a commissioner and then maybe one or two members of the public at the most. But if it looks like you need more room, then we'll opt for the multipurpose room.
Yeah, we've got the windows open and the hand sanitizer on the table, but the multipurpose room would be better.
The multipurpose room probably has inferior ventilation and it has inferior wireless.
Let's ask for the gym.
And while the gym is, the gym is potentially an option, but the wireless.
Wifi works in there, yeah.
So it's all, it's, it's all kind of a compromise, but that's why the multipurpose room was chosen.
Let's try multipurpose and see how it goes.
And then I'm just thinking in the current, in the upcoming months with more documents to review, I'm anticipating public interest.
Yeah, I think that's probably down the road though.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty far down the road. Okay. So let's talk about the agenda for our August 10th meeting and the topics that we have agreed so far. Ernie, you've had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, just that small issue of, of, that I brought up last time about when there's somebody expected and they're suddenly out there. You know, they haven't called in saying they're not going to be there or something. It, it would be a good practice to call and we should put it into, make it a thing that, a thing.
Yeah.
Not going to use the word policy, but we should make it a thing so that, a required practice, maybe that's the right word. So that when somebody's not there and it's for whatever reason they're not there, you know, they are at least called to notify that, where are you?
Any, okay, any discussion? Is that, is that a topic for the next agenda?
Yeah, the next time.
We want to talk about that?
Yeah.
All right.
We want to talk about it this time. We are on time.
Okay.
And then there was the follow-up of the discussion that Brian was going to do and then.
Yeah, and then, yeah, could that be, maybe that could be included, Brian, under the, you know?
Yeah.
The code of conduct, I think it is, yeah, yeah.
And if the, if the Fedford Chair.
Oh, yeah, the Fedford Chair, we have to have reserved time for him. Thank you. Okay, that's good. And I'm just looking down my notes here.
Well, it seems like we have standing issues as well.
Well, yeah, we'll have our announcements reports as usual. Okay, that will be repeated. Rod, is there anything that related to? Well, you have your administrative, administration overview for the land use regulation rewrite in August. Okay. So is this something you can start to get us up to speed on things that we should all know more about?
You mean before the August meeting?
No, the August meeting, at the August meeting. I'm just looking at the, the work plan. Administration overview is set for August.
Correct. That's when I'll be introducing what that section of the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations is intended to do.
Yeah, so that's a big, a good top, big topic for our agenda. So I'm going to suggest that we have no more. At the moment, I don't see room for anything else. Does anybody else see room for anything else? That's a lot. We've got the Fedford Chair for a half hour, Brian with the code of conduct and the administration overview for the land use regulations, which we don't want to cut short. Okay?
Right.
All right. And that may spill over into September, Rod. I mean, not the whole topic, but, but maybe do part of it in August and part of it in September. We'll see how long.
I would hope that what I'm trying to do in August is set the frame for the contribution from the D O B.
Okay.
And set up the call between the Planning Commission and the D O B so that the group understands that.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. All right. Good. That's great. That's excellent. Any, anybody have anything else for the agenda? If you do think of something, please let me know. All right. Brian and I have been getting the agenda together. It's actually not a lot of work because we do it here, but in any event, let us know if there's anything else. Okay. And we'll get that together. Okay. Is there any public comment? I don't know if we have any public with us still. I can't see. Okay. Can anyone see the public?
Linda Cook is here, but she has not indicated any comments.
Okay, very, very good. Then before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you to Rod for your contributions to this meeting. Much appreciated. I know it's a lot of work and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And hearing no other comments or questions, do we have a motion to adjourn? Leah has moved. Ernie has seconded. All in favor, we can raise our hands. Yay. Okay. All right. Thanks all and have a good summer. We'll see you in August. Okay?
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
I don't feel COVID.
No, but like with all this like.